Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of North Penn School District's Board of School Directors, October 19th, 2017. And we have a show for you tonight, so take a look at one of our screens.
Hello and welcome to this North Penn news update. I'm Anissa Gardisi. It was a beautiful evening for the 2017 North Penn Homecoming festivities. From the pep rally to the pregame tailgate, to the crowning of this year's king and queen, the day was one to remember. The Oak Park school community enjoyed a great day at their color run. The day focused on getting kids moving, all while raising funds for the Oak Park Home and School Association. The North Penn teaching staff was winning at their recent in-service day. The win day, or what is needed in service, was dedicated to what the teachers said they needed to assist them in being the best they can be for our students. Topics included technology, curriculum, content focus, and a time for the district's initiative on wellness. The Knight Crier staff held a community town hall for the candidates for the North Penn School Board election. Here, the candidates discussed several topics important to the community at large. Organized and moderated completely by the student staff of the Knight Crier, the night was a great experience for all involved, especially our dedicated student journalists. We wanted to give a special shout-out to our school nurses for working through all of the missing student immunization documents, helping the parents get everything in order so that students didn't have to miss any school. We started the year with over 1,100 missing documents, and currently there are zero. We would also like to thank the Detwiler Family Medicine for holding five immunization clinics that saw over 200 students. And finally, calling on North Penn and Elsie alumni, do not forget to sign up online to join the Thanksgiving Day Flag Football Game Alumni Band or Cheer Squad, the new Thanksgiving Day tradition. Join all of your friends, family, and classmates at the Grid Iron Flag Football Classic at 10:00 AM in Crawford Stadium. And join us the night before as we honor four new Knights of Honor at 6:00 PM in the North Penn High School auditorium. Come and celebrate the induction of the late Dr. Barry Chason and Carolyn Murphy, as well as Bonnie Rosen and Benjamin Weber into the Knights of Honor. For more information, log on to npenn.org or watch all of our programming at youtube.com/mptv. For North Penn Television, I'm Anissa Gardisi. Have a great night.
Welcome to our regularly scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome again to the meeting. I would like to announce for public disclosure that the board did meet in executive session tonight roughly from 7:05 to roughly 7:25, discuss matters of current and potential litigation. Now, we're going to move forward with our agenda, and it's our favorite time of the evening. We're going to talk about recognition and proclamations. Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are pleased this evening to recognize students for their accomplishments in the National Merit Honor Scholarship Competition. And with us this evening, we have Mary Scott and Sarah Radigan, Assistant Principals of the high school, to do the introductions.
I'm Sarah Radigan, Assistant Principal at North Penn High School. This is quite an honor to be up here to recognize our students and their accolades. We are proud to announce that we have 29 national merits, and that includes both our commended and our semifinalists. It's one of the largest numbers within the area, so we're very proud of that accomplishment. I'm going to start reading the commended scholars, and then Ms. Mary Scott will read our semifinalists. First, we have Jessica Barakley.
Jessica, over here.
Matthew Cole, he's not here today, but let's recognize him. Eric Diamond, also not in attendance. Joakim, not in attendance. Sarah Kwan. Julie Landis.
Miss Landis? Congratulations. Well done for your background.
Olivia Lu.
Miss Lu? Congratulations. Well done for your background.
Sophia McKee.
Sophia, congratulations. Well done for your background.
Manassi Nawafi.
Congratulations. Well done for your background.
Shakabur Ramen.
Mr. Ramen, congratulations. Well done for your background.
Priya Chef.
Congratulations. Well done for your background.
And Owen Varesbi, not in attendance. These are our commended scholars.
Oh.
Good evening. My name's Mary Scott. I'm one of the Assistant Principals at North Penn High School, and I have the honor of announcing the national merit semifinalists for this evening. Benjamin Allmark. Shravan Asana.
Benjamin?
Anup Bhatt.
Congratulations.
Reed Dentner.
He gave us the round.
Aaron Dixon.
Hold on, we don't want to mess it up. I saw him, right? Congratulations. Well done for your background. She wants to make sure she gets it right. We've got to put them in order, hold on.
There you go. Sorry.
Sorry for that little...
Leah Franco. (laughing). Leah? Congratulations. Well done for your background. Well done. Well done. Leah Franco?
All right, I'm back on track.
Madison Jaswar. Well done for your background. Rahul Jaglakar. Tristan Misko. Sally Shin. Hemenah Trejo Mara. Ladies and gentlemen, the 2016-2017 National Merit semifinalists. (applause).
Don't go away, Sarah. Don't go away, Mary Scott. We're going to have an opportunity for the full board and the administration to congratulate each and every one of you, so guys, would you come through? And Sarah and Mary Scott, would you join them at the end?
Sure, at the end. (inaudible). We're not saying anything, but we're going to shake hands and kiss babies. What? I carry that one. One cherry mellow. Pocket one. Yeah, I need to get one, I'm sure. (inaudible). Thank you, Mary Scott. How are you? Good to see you again. How are you? Hi, Sheriff, good to see you. Thank you. We have family. (inaudible). Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. Thanks for the flowers. Thank you. Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
the following dates. Friday, October 20th at 7:30 PM. Monday, October 23rd, 12:30 and 7:30 PM. Tuesday, October 24th, 12:30 and 7:30 PM. And Wednesday, October 25th, 12:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, we're very...
I'll let everybody clear out before we start, if you don't mind. All right, we're going to move forward with our agenda tonight. The next thing on our agenda is our Audience of Citizens. Those wishing to speak to the board, feel free to step forward, state your name and address, sign our Audience of Citizens logbook, and speak your mind.
Good evening. My name is Bill Patchell. I live at 404 Bonnie Lane in Lansdale, but it's actually Montgomery Township. And I've had two children go through the district, and one of the reasons I moved here, the second most important reason I moved to this district, was because of the school. And I did a little preparatory work, and I was mentioning to somebody, I said, "When you move into the district," I said, "I know it's the normal inclination when you're shopping for a house." "Oh, yeah, I love the granite, I love the stainless, this, and this, and this." I wonder how many people actually go and say, "I really like the house, but I have to check to see whether there's an available space in the school." I mean, and then, when you buy the house, then all of a sudden, now they come before the board here, "Hey, you have to supply air conditioning. You have to make more room. You have to do this. You have to do that." Well, look, if that was on your agenda, wouldn't you have checked? I did a lot of due diligence. I bought a rancher 25 years ago because I knew, I'm not quite elderly yet, but I know that one floor is going to be a lot better than a townhouse where I got to go up 39 floors, 39 stairs. I won't need a stair climber. I got it at my house, you know? And I look for things over a long period of time, and in proper planning, you'll know that in the normal progression, you prepare for this. I'm really amazed, the number of people that retire. "Well, do you have any say?" "No." Most of the people in the United States, I, it's really sorry to say, I don't know how they're ever going to retire. I think there was a statistic thing, like, "You got $30,000 and all you have is social security." Wow, I don't know how this is going to work out. I sure hope you get into one of these public housing things, but it's all on a very iffy basis. So people don't plan. And I don't like when the constituents or residents of the district come to the board and say, "Well, how come you got to, you got to make, you got to do this?" Well, look, we have to explain to these people that we have priorities here, and I know that your priority is for air conditioning. Your priority is to have a special room. Your priority is for doing this. But this board has to understand, and they do. Look, we got a lot of stuff around here to do, and Mr. Shapinski said, "Yeah, we got a lot of stuff, like bricks and mortar, roofs," you know? People aren't actually really concerned about that. And I don't think the public really understands the mechanics. How are we going to pay for this? Now, that was a wonderful presentation that the Knight Crier presented, and that was really wonderful, and I'm glad to see so many people turned out. And the presentation from both parties was really very good, and I hope the public watches this on television and is able, if they weren't able to be there, they would be able to look at it and make a decision, because that's the only thing, I think, that you can make an intelligent decision. Hanging five names on a sign and putting thousands of them out there, I don't, I don't really know what you represent. And you know, the only thing that really shows the public that you're really interested, have you got boots on the ground? Did you actually go from neighborhood to neighborhood? I didn't see any people, not in my neighborhood, and that's what I really determined. Do you have a passion that you really want this job? Mr. Shapinski, I saw him walking by my house.
I was going to say, didn't he chase me down the street if I remember right?
Yes, yes. And you know what? One of the few people that I saw doing the boots on the ground, because, you know, sitting in that spot right there is a very difficult job. And I don't think the public realizes the input that these people do. This is a really very, very difficult job. And I said that the school district is the very foundation of the republic which we live in. It's an unpaid position. Now, unlike some of those jobs that they have up in Harrisburg and Washington, I'm sure, like, you spend a billion dollars running for president? Wow, that seems like a crazy expenditure for a job that only pays about $400,000. There must be some other things that I'm not really aware of, what's going on in the background. So I think, at that debate, some of the vital issues that weren't brought up, $100 million for the high school, that was brought up very briefly, very, just a thin veneer of discussion. Do you know, if you borrowed $100 million, let's say you could do it for $100 million, I don't think you can, okay? We only owe $100 million now. You want to double the amount of money that we're going to borrow? Now, let's, that sounds perfectly ridiculous. But you know what? People come up and say, "Well, you got to do it." Got to do what? I have the restraints. You know what decides on what gets done around here? What's feasible? Do we have the rating? Do we have the resources? Do we have the passion to do it? How bad do you want to bleed? Okay, now, we have things coming up, and I'm going to hurry up here. You know, we have something in the paper. I get the North Penn Reporter, and the reason I get it is because, you know what? Why do people buy the local paper? Because your excellent coverage of the, of the school board, I don't think the Inquirer or anybody else, I don't think Fox News is going to cover this, okay? And the reason I buy it is because the electorate needs to be informed. Gee, I wish more people would read the newspaper. But anyway, I got this little thing, he says, "The GOP proposal," this is in the tax, tax resolution thing that they're trying to put through now, "The GOP proposal would eliminate the federal deduction for state, local taxes, that would be the school tax, you wouldn't be able to deduct that anymore." You know what? I'm a guy that comes in here and says, "Gee, we need to be really careful. These people are really having a hard time in Lansdale, you know? They're barely making it." I know if you're making a couple hundred grand, and you work at Merck, and you're making a pile of money, you know, it's hard to really encompass in your brain that people are really having a hard time getting by. So, and this is especially in high-tax Democratic-leaning states such as New York, New Jersey, California, and Illinois. Boy, if you go to a school district in New Jersey, all you want to do is escape. I'm telling you, that is probably the most wretched place that you can live. They do have good schools, yeah, but the school tax? $14,000? Give me a break. I mean, I can't even imagine why people move there. I must be close to the shore, and they don't want to pay the bridge toll. I don't know what it is, but, you know. But anyway, so, and to wrap things up, I'm, I'm a little, I haven't been speaking for a while, so I have a few things that I've been saving up. I met with, with Kristen Landis, and I have to tell the public that that employee, she is the sharpest, she's in charge of the Chromebook, and I talked with her, she gave me half an hour of her time. And you are to be commended for the type of person that you were able to attract to this district. She is fantastic. I hope they don't lose her, because you know what? Some district out there in Pittsburgh is like, "Hey, we'll give you $180,000." And you know what? I don't want it to get like baseball. How much are we paying? Oh, my goodness, it's a free agent. You don't want that to happen, you know, because that's, that's what's going to happen, you know? We'll be on a point where people start stealing, stealing really good employees. "Yeah, we got that technology person. She's fantastic." So I told her when I met with her, she's very competent, answered everything. I was amazed. And I said, "I'm going to make a special thing," because I speak occasionally, and I said, "I want to make a special mention that you are one of the most fantastic employees." I mean, they're all fantastic, but, you know, really, wow, that's five stars. That's really fantastic. On Facebook, it's a thumb up, you know?
You're revealing our secrets, man.
Yeah, come on.
Right, you know, and I said, "The people that were here were responsible for attracting her." I mean, I looked at her credentials, I said, "You probably, you, I mean, I, I'm a pygmy as far as, you know, on academic credentials. You're..." Oh. So, and I want to thank the TV crews last, yesterday, and that was another indication. Look at the, look at the coverage and the way that was all handled. Wow, if I was a district out there in some, you know, rural county, wow, look what these people do. This is pretty fantastic. Look at this technology they've got. I mean, I'm sure all other school districts, they just shake their head, he says, "You know, someday we might get like that," but I don't think that's really going to happen. I would like to see a representative from the school, from the Student Council, come. I mean, they're not voting, but they'd be here, and they would be able to take back to the Student Council, "This is what we accomplished." What, is there anything from the, from the Student Council that you think would be good that the, that the, that the school board should know? And that they would be able to interact with you, and the more you interact with your stakeholders, it's, it's very important to do that. And I said, "That, that debate was arranged," and I said, "That was fantastic." I like to think that I represent the elder residents, who maybe can't get here, or maybe feel that they don't have the oratory skills needed to make a presentation that sounds intelligent. I mean, a lot of people are bashful, I mean, this is not easy, you know? So, but I, I think it's important that our students know that they need to be grateful. I mean, there's a lot of bleeding out here, I mean, a lot of money, 92,000 people, you know? The school tax, like, like our, Mr. Shapinski said, "Well, you know, only 20% of the people actually use our services." I mean, but I do know one thing, 100% of the structures in this, in this district all pay taxes. And I'll tell you what, if they were to lose their tax benefit, I guarantee it would look like, it would be like a riot, and they'd be here with pitchforks and rakes, and I'm telling you, they're not going to like it. If you lived in Upper Gwinnett, paying $12,000, "I can't deduct it." Man, this is really pretty severe. So you'll lose that. You know what would happen if Merck decides, "Oh, yeah, we're going to merge with Novo Nordisk, and we're going to redomicile $27 million"? Boy, that just vaporized. Where's that going? Our bond rating, they said, "Our bond rating, yeah, very good." But there was a caveat in that, you know? You have a lot of money coming in from one person, and if you made a presentation, one vendor, I mean, you get all your stuff from three people? That's, that's not acceptable. And you can't have one customer you're selling. Like, what happens if they change, they don't want it? Well, we're basically out of business then. So, you know, it's heavily weighted with Merck. That's another reason why I moved here, because I figured there'd be a couple of very intelligent biophysicists over there making a lot of money would help to contribute, so I could keep my house. You know, that's one of the things when you buy a house. But anyway, I think that the board now is doing a fantastic job. I believe that people who want the job have a passion, and, you know, the public will have to make a decision then. I certainly hope we have a good turnout. I think they usually get about 9,000 people out of 91. That seems to me like a very apathetic republic. People in a true republic, they want to be involved. You know, so, I think 65 or so, I have always voted, I have never missed. And they even said, "Boy, you never miss." I said, "It's your responsibility, when you live in the greatest republic in the world, to exercise your vote and show up." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patchell. All right, no one else is there, let's move forward with our agenda. I recommend approval of the minutes of the September 14th, 2017 action meeting, as well as the minutes of the work session held on October 10th, 2017, as circulated.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Schelling, second by Mrs., did somebody, no, John said it, but didn't somebody second it?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McGee, thank you. Sorry, I didn't turn over. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved? Let's go through committee reports, and we'll start with Finance, Mr. O'Donnell.
Okay, Finance Committee report for October 19th, 2017. Under a new business update from the last September 25th meeting, the monthly reports were reviewed with additional discussion on the following item. Real estate tax rebate program. Mr. Shrocki gave a presentation on a proposed real estate tax program for qualifying homeowners in North Penn. The program would provide rebates to homeowners who qualify for the Pennsylvania Property Tax Rebate Program. The recommendation was to provide rebates of 25% of the amount issued through the state program starting in the 2018-19 fiscal year. New depository. Mrs. Shrocki reviewed the proposal from Meridian Bank for 1.3% investment rate for fully liquid funded secured with the Federal Home Loan Bank letter of credit. The full board must approve Meridian Bank as a depository. State budget update. Mrs. Shrocki reviewed the status of the state budget. All state subsidies have been received so far in 2017-18, but if a revenue package does not pass soon, subsidies may be withheld. A delay on subsidy payments would impact the district's interest earnings, but cash flow would be sufficient until at least April. Meritorious budget, meritorious budget award submission. Ms. Pitt submitted the submission of the 2017-18 budget book for review under the meritorious budget award program. North Penn is only, is one of only 10 districts in the state to receive the award, and the only district in Montgomery County. If successful, this would be the third year the district has received this award. Since then, we got, Steve got a notice two, three days ago, that we did get it for the third year in a row.
That's correct. Yep, third straight year, and we remain the only district in Montgomery County to receive that award, and one of only 10 districts in the state.
So you talk about transparency, it's all there. Items recommended for the work session and action meeting tonight, the real estate tax pre, real estate tax rebate program that we discussed on the October 10th work session, and Meridian Bank as a new depository. Next meeting will be on Tuesday, October 31st, at 5 o'clock, not 6, 6:30, 5 o'clock at ESC right here. Please note, this is a change from the original scheduled meeting. Thank you. End of report.
Halloween, Frank, right? You guys moved the meeting to Halloween?
Yeah. That was for you. We heard you were going out early.
I'm going out early. Frank, I celebrate Halloween, so. All right, any questions of finance this evening? All right, let's move forward with personnel. Mr. Kerr. Yes, Personnel Committee met in executive session October 3rd, from 5:30 to 6:30, to discuss matters of personnel and potential litigation. It says negotiations, but I think we put that to bed.
Yes.
Did we not? For at least another three years or so. End of report.
Thank you.
We got one more report now, right?
One more.
We got one more of them.
Safe Schools, Mrs. Pukowski.
Take out her memorize, Dan.
Mrs. Pukowski, Safe Schools.
Safe Schools Committee did not meet in October. The next Safe Schools Committee meeting will be held Monday, November 13th, 6:00 PM here in the ESC. End of report. Thank you for the large type. Do it on the large report style.
Thank you. Education, Community Policy, Mrs. Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Shapinski. Before I read the report, I would like to publicly thank Mr. Kevin Monero, Mr. Gilmore, the Knight Criers, and all students, and all the students that contributed to last night's forum, making it an outstanding event. We are so proud of them, and it was really amazing what they did and how they were able to bring that all together. It was professionally done. Kudos to them.
Thank you. And there's a link on our website, right?
Yeah.
That's the lady right there to put it on.
YouTube, I thought, I'm pretty sure the link's on the channel.
She deserves a hand.
(applause). She deserves it. She deserves it.
Yeah. (laughing). (inaudible). (inaudible).
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. The E C P committee held a meeting on Monday, October 16. At the meeting, three board policies which have been reviewed and revised were presented. The board policies are Board Policy 5114, Suspension and Expulsion, Board Policy 5144, Discipline and Punishment, and Board Policy 5152, Weapons on School Property. Policy 5114 was rewritten to be updated and reflective of the language in the P A school code. In Policy 5144, language was updated, and a paragraph relative to students with disabilities was added. Only minor verbiage updates were made to Policy 5152. In addition to the policies, there were several informational items on the agenda. Information about the district's efforts to ensure website compliance was shared. Federal law requires that any entity receiving federal funding must provide equal opportunity and access to everyone, including on websites. International standards for the Internet are applied to determine a website's accessibility to all, including the visually impaired, hearing impaired, and physically impaired. To achieve this goal, the district's website was redesigned, disclaimer was added, staff was being trained, and teacher websites are being gradually transitioned to the Google platform. An update regarding the High School College and Career Center and the Naviance software tool was also shared at the meeting. Naviance enhances the ability of the high school guidance staff to assist students with preparations for college and other postgraduate opportunities. As a result, more students and parents are utilizing the services of the College and Career Center. This system is also being piloted in grades 7 through 9 this year. At the request of the committee, the status of the process for identifying an academic data management and digital assessment software provider was shared. After identifying two finalists, checking references, and conducting site visits, a selection has been made. Recommendation for the approval of this contract is expected to be put forth in November. The cost of the software is already included in the budget for 2017-18. An update on the elementary math program was also provided. Several strategies to improve instruction and student performance are being pursued, including curriculum review, professional development, district-wide professional learning communities, and curriculum walkthroughs. The next meeting of the committee will be November 13. End of report.
Thank you. Any questions of E C P this evening?
Actually, I do myself, thank you.
You have a question for your own self?
Yes. But Dr. Holden, we had talked about perhaps looking at a multi-year contract, if that could reduce the yearly costs. Correct. Mr. Shrocki's going, and Dr. Landis and myself are going to be talking to the vendor to see what it may be negotiable. Thank you.
Support services, Mr. Schelling.
Thank you, Mr. Shapinski. Support service committee met on September 28, 2017. Scott Kennedy reviewed the proposed change order to restore the construction staging area at Montgomery Elementary School. The specifications called for a 24-inch depth trenching followed by soil remediation and planting of new grass. A significant amount of rock was found below the service in this area. An alternative solution was developed and approved by the Montgomery County Conservation District. The community reviewed the bidding schedule along with current budget estimates from Bonet Associates for air conditioning project at Gwinnett Oak Park and NAP. Also, Scott Kennedy reviewed the process being utilized to develop a long-range facility plan for North Penn School District. The process includes gathering of facility data, building surveys, interviews with facility staff, and building inspections. The data will prioritize and incorporate into an overall long-range plan. Our next support service committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 31, 2017, at 4:45 p.m. here at the E S C. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Schelling. Any questions for support services this evening? Yeah. Scott. Frank. Scott, could you please give me an update of the, the cameras in the middle school?
Elementary schools?
I'm, yeah. I'm sorry, elementary, yeah.
The four servers were installed in the elementary schools, and they're ready to go. We have cameras, our staff's installing the cameras. Gwinnett is just about finished, and we're going to move on to the other three schools. Expect to have it all done within the next month.
Okay. Cool. Thank you.
You're welcome.
North Monaco Technical Career Center. Who's got this one tonight?
I wasn't there.
We met on Monday, right? Monday? We met on Monday of this week, short meeting. Just a regular.
That long of a week, you don't remember one day?
Student, student travel requests were approved, personnel items and contracts were approved. Very quick meeting, the 50th anniversary of North Monaco is coming up, and will be celebrated at the holiday party at the end of the year. So, everybody will be getting invited to that, and it's going to be a nice event, so hopefully you can all join us. We meet again in the third week in October. Thanks.
That's great. Thank you. Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, Mr. D'Azio.
Thank you. The M C I U did not meet in October, we meet again on November 15, 2017. End of report.
Thank you. North Penn Educational Foundation, Mrs. Leonard.
Thank you. The foundation held its 200th meeting on October 4. What a milestone. Since our, since our inception in 1988, we had funded more than $1 million in grants that inspire our students and support teacher creativity. One such grant was discussed at the last meeting. A presentation was given by staff developers Meg Burke and Jackie Giammarco on their foundation-supported project, Breakout E D U. This escape-room-type activity provokes teamwork among students and staff to solve and piece together puzzles. The activities can be geared to any curriculum, and teachers have been using these kits in areas such as math, social studies, and reading. They are so popular, there is even a wait list for their use. The foundation also learned about a $10,000 donation recently received from longtime-standing foundation supporter, the Burke family, not related to the Meg Burke just mentioned. As always, their funding will help the Special Education Department, and more specifics are being finalized. The foundation is currently accepting new grant applications for the school year. Deadline is November 15. I encourage staff to apply and thank those who take the time to do so. Finally, the Alumni Association, which is part of the fund, foundation, is holding a North Penn trivia night at Round Guys Brewery in Lansdale next Thursday, October 26. The contest begins at 8:00 p.m., but please get there early so that you can get a table. A portion of proceeds benefit the Alumni Association. If you have any questions about the foundation, you can contact Christine Liberaske at the E S C. I believe our next meeting is November 1 at 7:45 here in the building. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Leonard. We're going to move forward with our superintendent report, Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do recommend approval of new board policy 5146.1. It's regarding students and the administration in the lock zone, per item 5517A through C.
So moved. Second by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. Comments or questions?
What schools are we putting these in?
We are going to have it available in all schools. While we certainly do not anticipate that it's an issue in all schools, we want it available in case we have community members or anybody else in the building that it becomes a necessity.
Good. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved?
Recommend approval of the establishment of a general fund money market investment account with Meridian Bank. The authorized signatories for establishing the account will be the board president, board secretary, and treasurer. Two business office staff members, the assistant director of business administration, and the accounting supervisor will also be authorized signers on the account, per item 5917.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schelling, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions? How many signatures you need to transfer the money?
The wire, the wire instructions will be that the assistant director of business administration and the accounting supervisor, so two. And then usually what happens with wire transfers, a phone call is then placed to me for verification that the wire is indeed valid before it goes through.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved?
Recommend adoption of the resolution regarding a capital reserve fund transfer for the 2016-17 fiscal year, thereby transferring $1,700,000 in general funds to the capital reserve fund, per item B A 4A through B.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by Mr. McGee. Comments or questions to this? We're putting, we're transferring $1.7 million into our capital reserve for capital projects, and that's going to be enough to handle our 4 million square feet of buildings?
Certainly not, but this is a common practice that we do at the, this time of year, we're wrapping up the audit. So, the 1.7 represents unspent funds from the 16-17 fiscal year. So, this will be part of the allocation to handle any kind of infrastructure improvements at our buildings.
Carpets, windows, one-time expenditures.
Correct.
Right. All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved or transfer?
Recommend approval of the attached resolution for a real estate tax rebate program for qualified homeowners for the 2018-19 fiscal year, per item B A 5A through G.
Motion by Mrs. Charnock, seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. Comments or questions? We are going to do an outreach program, right?
We are, that's a big part.
That's a big part of this. Just the beginning, I think we should, hopefully we'll go farther in the future.
Yeah, I plan to.
If it makes sense.
Absolutely.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved?
Recommend approval of bids, per item B A 6A through B, as listed.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Kerr.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved?
Recommend acceptance of the gift to the district as listed.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Schelling, seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. I'm sorry, I apologize, Mrs. Charnock. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I just want to thank all these people for their donations, really appreciate it.
Thank you. I agree. All those approve?
Doctor.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Didn't think so. Approved, let's keep going.
Recommend rescission of the gift to the district as listed.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Schelling, seconded by Mr. McGee. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead. Hold on, hold on.
It didn't work out for them.
Yeah, that's not that strange. I mean, they, we've had things where they donated refrigerators, things like that, and some things just don't work for us. A rug. A rug for the first graders, you mean, the first grad, is it not soft enough? Maybe people trip over it, you never know.
You never know.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Recommend approval of the personnel items listed, A through D.
So moved. Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved?
Recommend approval of student travel, per item B A 10.
Motion by Mr. Charnock, seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved?
Recommend approval of contracts, per item B A 11A through E, copies of which are on file in the Office of Business Administration.
Motion by Mr. Kerr.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved?
Recommend approval of alternative placements, per B A 12, copies of which are on file in the Office of Special Education.
So moved. Motion by Mrs. Charnock, seconded by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved? Let's move forward with our finance report, Mr. Shrocki.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few updates.